Welcome to the March 8, 2001 meeting, Council of the Town of Washington, Virginia. We are so happy to have you here and want to thank everyone for wearing masks tonight. Even though I'm very envious, I overheard in the audience that several people have been fully vaccinated and good for them. For those of us who have not gotten there quite yet, we are envious and we are hopeful. First thing that we have to do is to approve the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I will.
Gail moves a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any changes or additions or deletions?
I'll give me.
All right, we have a motion to approve the agenda and a second. A roll call vote to approve, Patrick? Or I'm sorry, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe? I, yes?
Yes.
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 They are approved, thank you. We have two sets of minutes to review tonight. First set of minutes is from the February 8 council meeting. And the second set is the draft work session. Because they were different creatures, we should probably do approve them separately. So for the draft minutes, before we have changes or stuff, may we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Amen.
Mary Ann, thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Gail, a second. Changes, additions or deletions? I have one on the second paragraph on page four. Mayor Catlin said June 1 is when the Board of Supervisors, actually it's the U.S. Postal Service wants the post office open. I think Board of Supervisors and everybody else would like it open a year ago. But USPS is the ones who are, want the post office open on June 1. Any other additions or deletions or changes? Without hearing any changes, then roll call vote to approve, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 The minutes from February 8 are approved with one change. And a motion to approve the draft work session minutes from February 27. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Mary Ann, thank you, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Gail. Any changes, additions or deletions? Hearing none, a roll call vote, Jean?
I'll extend.
Patrick?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
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 All right, we have six approvals and one extension. And so the February 27 work session minutes are approved. Mayor's report, I am waiting every day for them to get back. I've been told that they should be back anytime now to put down the pad and the trusses, I believe, and the rest of the wood, I guess, for the framing should be delivered at any moment. I want to thank whoever for the dry weather that we've had so that we can get things going again. But outside of that, I have very little to report at this point, except to say that I am grateful for the people in the community who have contributed funds to allow us to make some of the enhancements to the post office. And to the people on the task force who have been working very hard to get these changes made and to get the information out, I am grateful to them. And that is going to be my mayor's report at this time. Gail?
Thank you. On the report that you've got, I caught it too late, but it's, I know, I would love to know that the February 24, 2011 was 63,000, literally 33,000. The year-to-date, did you like that, Joe? Your highly paid treasurer about year-to-date numbers were all correct. Let's go into that. Any questions on anything? That, of course, reflects down at 151 on the totals. Nothing unusual to report on the bills to be paid. Then have a motion?
I'll move. Joe moves a second?
I'll second.
Mary Ann, a second. Any additions, deletions or questions? Hearing none, roll call vote to approve the treasurer's report, Jean?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes, are we going to amend this then?
Yes, as amended.
I'm sorry, motion as amended.
Okay, but then has this been modified in writing? The treasurer's report?
No, only just now. Do you want to post comment?
I think it would be good to have it documented.
We'll do that. Then let's post comment and just do the bills to be paid. I'll get this to you tomorrow.
All right, so here you have amendment. Mary Ann, I'm sorry, who made the original motion?
I.
I'm the one who amended.
Second, are we ready amendment? All right, who made the second? Are you all ready for the amendment? All right. A roll call vote to approve just the bills to be paid, Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right, planning commission?
Yes, sorry, we met on Monday. We reviewed outcomes of issues we decided in FY '20 and look forward to issues we might decide in FY '21. Just going through the list quickly, on, we had recommended that the ARB updated guidelines. We're recommending now that they, since there's been a pause on that, they, the town supports hiring a consultant to help them do that. On dilapidated buildings, I think Fred, you were going to talk to people who own dilapidated buildings around the town prior to perhaps sending a letter out. Black kettle update, I see Chuck is here with us. It would be nice at some stage, I think, to have an update. We're reading a lot in the newspaper about black kettle. So just to get a sense of where we are on that. Work program for 2021, we agreed that we would explore the issue of turning the town into a hotspot, not into, not just connectivity, but a hotspot, so wherever you are in the town, you can connect. We need to talk to the library, we need to talk to the county. And we think it would be rather nice to have the juxtaposition of old town, old historic town, new, new state-of-the-art ability to connect as you walk around the town. So we need to look at what that means for a historic town to have to pack sync some cables, although it's not clear that's necessary. Second thing, it was proposed on town beautification. You have the, you have the fund for the post office, ours is a smaller request, which is that the barrels, the seasonal decorations aren't getting updated in the way they used to. So we would like to propose on town in general, beautification, seasonal decorations, that we have a line item in the budget, if you don't already have one, and that we have a group of volunteers to perhaps take charge of that.
I appreciate the help. I said I'd appreciate the help.
Okay, oh, you're doing it now, Mary Ann. Sorry, well, you're doing a wonderful job. This is not going to pass any exception. And finally, Fred, we look forward to hearing more about the planning protocols. Everybody was intrigued by what the planning protocols actually meant, so we look forward to hearing more. That's basically what we discussed.
Great, thank you. All right, Architectural Review Board. There was not a meeting last month, and there'll be a meeting this Wednesday to discuss four applications. Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
Hello, come here.
All right. Under whole business, COVID water testing. Brad, I presume that's you?
Yep. I had mentioned previously that a number of communities around the country have been doing some water testing as a sort of precursor protection of COVID outbreaks. And we're doing it through their wastewater systems. So I had already contacted ESS about this, how the lines would work and everything else. And then I reached out to Mr. Curry to see if that's something the county would have an interest in, either to conduct the tests or whatever, because there's also a plant in Sperryville. And that will be another point of measurement to potentially spot a COVID outbreak. And so he and I went back and forth a little bit. The, we kind of agreed that, yes, it could be done, but then, do they, what is the value of the information? We have such a tourist population and transit population through the VABs and stuff. He was pointing out that that relative to our population can really skew things because maybe you do see something, but it's due to people who are not actually living here. So the value to undertake the efforts and everything else really probably wouldn't do much for us in the long run. So, you know, it was a good suggestion and has merit, but probably not applicable to our community or our county.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for checking that out. Going on to the whole business, horizontal mooring, update on that?
Yes. As people remember from last week, we talked about, in order to install the sewer line for the new post office, we have to extend the sewer piping along Warren Avenue. Unfortunately, there is a tree that is in the way. We looked at, and that's our contractor, who does a lot of our sewer work, and there are just not enough space between the edge of the pavement and that tree to try and put in a trench. We ended up cutting some major roots, which would ultimately lead to the tree dying. So the alternative was to go under the tree and do what's called horizontal mooring. And that's where a machine comes in and actually pushes a real bit through and then pulls back piping. So I started working on that and I spoke with 10 different horizontal mooring contractors, reaching out as far as Maryland and as all the way down to south of Richmond. I only found one who said they would take on the job, because it's a very small job. Some of the guys only do utility lines, cable, telephone, electric. So I do have, I loaned them that I talked extensively. We got a quote from them, which I passed over to the mayor, and he can come in and do the work. Now, what we're doing is we're going to run up Warren Avenue and pull back a three-inch line that will be tied into the sewer. Where that comes back toward along Warren Avenue, then we'll do a 90-degree turn and run a line underground to the back of what is going to be the pad for the post office building, where the grinder clock will sit. And that way, if you drive past that site, you'll see there's a bunch of excavation and stuff, it's very uneven. And so to go in with the conventional equipment and dig a trench and all, it would be, you know, really a problem. So it's much quicker and easier to actually shoot that line so we don't have a trench there. And then the third piece is the water line on the original plans as it played out, comes from the front of the post office building out to Warren Avenue. The water lines, as best as we can tell, without bringing trench equipment, actually run just under the very edge of the asphalt. And if we disturb the asphalt, we're going to have some ball media. So we looked at and a simple, easier alternative is that we have a six-inch main going along Leggett Avenue from Warren Avenue out to the treatment plant. So what we're going to do is just actually do a horizontal mooring, which will be quick and simple, and actually go under Leggett Avenue, pull back a sleeve, and then come to water and bring in the water line to the post office site. The advantage of doing that is we do not disturb Leggett Avenue, Leggett Lane, because if we decide to dig a trench through there, for one, the guys going to trouble treatment plant would be a problem because there's not another way to get there. And secondly, you'd never be able to put that road back so that it's smooth and consistently paved. So this alleviates disturbing a lot of the property or anything, and the guy can be in and out in a day. And then Atrium Construction, who is the contractor, would be used to do all of our sewer connections. They will tie into the sewer line along Warren Avenue, they will also install the grinder clock, the vacuum property, tie the line there. And then come to water, because our handles our water systems, they will tie into the, tap into the main of Leggett Avenue and bring the line and meter over to the post office property.
Thank you so much for doing all that work. It's great.
Yeah, it was a lot of labor. First, I didn't even respond, because this is a very small project and most of these guys, they do hundreds of thousands of feet, you know, in a project. And our total footage is probably over the 250 feet. But he said, and he was recommended by another larger company. So I don't think we're going to find anybody else who can do this work and do it cleanly.
That's great, thank you so much.
Yep.
All right, under new business, discussion of the planning protocols. This came up, the, so in my background, I've been involved in about eight or nine building projects. And in almost all the municipalities in which I've done these building projects, at the very beginning of the building project, you submit a preliminary application of what you're doing, the scope of what you're doing. And that municipality gets together all of the different agencies that would have some impact on what you're doing. It would be the zoning office, if they have a, oh, what's the other parts? Building inspector, it would also be the planning department they may have, it may have other different components in it. In our case, I'm thinking of Architectural Review Board. And you get them all in their room for a meeting with the builder and, or if it's a major renovation project. And what they do is they sit down, they've gotten a preliminary idea of the plans, they can ask questions, they get a little more detail, and the real purpose is to help the builder or the renovator to have an understanding of some obstacles that they may not have foreseen that are going to be out there. And it makes it easier for the person who's doing the construction not to find out about something at the last minute, which may lead to a delay of several weeks to several months. And it is just a more efficient way for a town or municipality to handle the business. So what I am proposing is that we begin setting up a similar kind of structure here. The application would go to the town clerk, the town clerk and/or the zoning administrator could determine whether the project is big enough that requires to have this kind of meeting come together. Have a representative of the Architectural Review Board, have the zoning administrator, the town clerk will reach out to the county to see if the appropriate people in the county would be involved in this. And really, it's a way to try to get everything clearly out on the table ahead of time so that a project doesn't run into any kind of unnecessary delays or hindrances as it's going along. The benefit for the town and for the community at large is that we're not scurrying around, trying to help a builder or a member of the community who has a major renovation project get stymied because they were hoping to open at such and such date and they found that they weren't able to because they had not covered one important base, whatever that may be. So this is the idea. I wanted to give a preliminary idea, and this sounds like something that the town should pursue, and if so, I'd like to then turn it over to our zoning administrator to work with the town clerk and be happy to provide whatever support I can. And then other members of the town council, if they have any ideas. And then I'll also reach out to the county. And we'll pull something together for the town council to look at and to approve either at the April, I hope at the April meeting.
Makes a lot of sense to me. It's going to take so much back and forth and back and forth and who's doing what.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? The fact that everybody's participating in this meeting does not preclude any decision by the formal committees?
No.
So if ARB still has to approve a design, or zoning has to approve an application or planning, so it's, the committee work is still there, this is more informational?
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
There is this sort of legal nuance here, that you require by statute to give comments to a submission within 60 days. And once you give those comments, you have, if, once those comments are acted upon, there's a resubmission, you have 45 days to act on those. So the question becomes, you get together, you give an applicant these comments, does that toll the, yeah, toll the 60 days?
That was our question about, does it respect still the jurisdiction of the fourth committee, whether it be ARB or planning, or is it going to undercut that and so on?
Yeah, I think just have to be very clear about it, have written protocols, and I think written protocols for all the processes, you know. I've got some votes and I'm working on those, and soon as one project, I think, is completed, I'm going to go to work on that.
It's, I think that what this will do is educate whoever the contractor is doing the project, you know, it's just to educate that person, that entity of what needs to be done for the ARB, for the zoning administrator, for the town clerk, so it's more of a sharing of what we as a town and, you know, if we're rebuilding whatever needs, so.
And so also, we're going to have a unique situation in our community, that we have some of the responsibilities all within the county and some all within the town. So to get the two voices together in the same room, I think, would be helpful. So, there are some questions?
I just have a question for John as a follow-up. If you have, as Fred suggests, a representative from each of the appropriate bodies, right? And they obviously are there to offer opinions, advice, comments on the preliminary act. Is there, and then they go forward on that basis, right? The builder, the applicant, is there any liability down the road because that's what you guys told me, and now you're telling me the whole committee or whatever that I can't, or that I also need to do something else?
That's a, that's a big concern, because once you give comments?
Right.
You cannot give any more comments. You can only, once the applicant responds to those, you know, to respond to what's been proposed, you can't bring up a new issue.
See, so you're really putting it dead in the hands of one member of each?
Yeah, so you have to, I think you have to be very clear, it's got to be documented, that this is just an informal process and will only be conducted at the request of the applicant, and that it does not constitute any action within the meaning of the statute that imposes all these time limits and constraints about how you handle comments and things like that. So it's, it's just a sort of a friendly thing, it's not getting into the legal process itself.
From a county planning commission standpoint, I think it's not dissimilar to what we do with preliminary reviews of special exceptions, special use permit applications. It's really just, do you have all the pieces in place, all your ducks in a row, and then later you'll public hearing and all, and all the formal processes. But to your point, the timeline of questions is an important one to work out.
I'd be interested, when you have informal meetings like this, do you have a kind of sense of, or do they walk away with a sense of, should they pursue it or?
During the preliminary review process, for sure, yeah.
And I think that'd be very helpful, that if someone has something that really just is not available there, you could sort of voice that opinion, it's opinion only for their consideration.
Just making it clear that it's advisory, not binding, or part of the process.
Any agree between the lines, it's not, hey, this isn't going to happen, you can walk away and say, okay, it's too complicated for you. But that's what it sounds like to me, is, I mean, just using a comparison of the county planning commission. It's a preliminary review type exercise.
But here, aren't your preliminary reviews a public hearing? It's not a?
It's not a public hearing.
It's a private meeting and?
No, it's not private, it's a public meeting, but it's not, it's not.
Well, that's what I mean, a public.
Yeah, it's a public meeting. But there's no, there's no public, formal public hearing.
Right.
You're basically just reviewing an application, the zoning administrator's commenting as to whether all the pieces are there to proceed. And frankly, I think it's kind of a duplicative process for the planning commission, I think we could probably clean it up. But that's, I was just trying to think what this would be like based on existing kind of process we follow. Yeah, I mean, that's very much, let's take a look generally and see if everything's there. And to John's point, applicants can take away some indication of whether.
But you would have notice requirements? I mean, to me, it's going to trigger all sorts of, if it's a public thing, you've got to have a notice, and then you're triggering maybe a time, I mean, I'm just, I don't mean to be the down ones.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, it's stuff to work out.
Yeah.
I think, I think a part of the idea too is if you have a protocol, one very first thing is that is maybe a precedent document to that protocol, is that if someone walks into the clerk's office and says, I want to build a house, or I want to do this, I want to do that, there's something that she can hand that individual, that builder, the architect, whoever it is, and say, okay, this is how we go about this in the town of Washington, and here are all the parties who may or may not be involved. If you're not going to have to tap into the water in the middle of the street, then you don't have to deal with V-Dog. But there's a list, you know, there's an ARB. You build out the county, there's an ARB, if you come to town, a lot of people don't realize, oh, there's an ARB that's going to be reviewing and looking at things and certainly within all of their powers to look at compliance with regulations and ordinances and things like that. So I think what we're kind of finding is, as has been in the county, as well as in the town, we've done a lot of things on hand, we've done a lot of things because we know each other. And unfortunately, it's reached a point where we need to formalize certain policies, certain procedures, certain protocols. So there's written down, and then people don't get, you know, blindsided and say, well, so-and-so, I talked to him, you know, at the post office, or hey, we were a quick margin, this was okay. It formalizes it so that everybody is treated equally. Granted, the town doesn't have a lot of land, we're not going to see lots of these events, but there are ability properties for a building to go in or renovation to occur. And it's in a whole order that it's done correctly, it's done by the rules and regulations that are set in place, things that would pass, you see, John Bennett, right now, we call it zoning, but maybe it's, that's a misnomer in terms of title, it's more of another type of review. So I think that's kind of what Fred was talking about. I mean, I only, last week, spoke to Barco about, gee, we should have a standard form and procedures and stuff, so that if someone says, I need a water tap, okay, here you go, I need a sewer tap, here you go. It's really outlined, so you know what's going to be required, who's going to have to be involved, and then also, where possible, you know, what are the fees?
Right, but Brad, could you just write that down? Do you have to have the?
Excuse me. Like I said, right? Like I said, right now, it's, you know, we're just kind of saying we wanna create, how we do that, you know, I'm not sure. But I think, I think a lot of it should be in line with it.
Let's see what's John.
So my, I think that's a great idea. And I think that would be helpful, a kind of running order of who you have to go to, who you have to consult. I'm more concerned about the actual meeting because I think in a meeting, it could either be duplicative, as Kier has said, or people will speak without having consulted their colleagues and they may, they may assent to something without realizing they had. I just, I just think it could be a hostage to fortune. And you could get the equivalent also of the handshake by the post office, but except it's happening in a meeting because people aren't entirely sure themselves. So writing it down, I would, I would certainly support. Something that Barbara could give out where people can.
Right, nothing's perfect, nothing's infallible. But I think if we at least had a structure that we don't have now, we are steps ahead. And so it'll take a little while to create that. But I think there's enough expertise, you know, to make that happen.
Mr. Bennett, I think the written protocols are absolutely necessary. They have to be as detailed as possible. And that'll get everyone started on the right trajectory. However, there's, in a lot of cases, there's some nuance or there's some unusual circumstance. So if the applicant or the county, for that matter, wishes to call this meeting to begin to discuss issues that might be outside of the written protocols or if the applicant just wants the meeting for whatever reason. But it could be very helpful because you're just as exhausted as you can try and be with a written document. So you just can't cover everything.
All right. Any other comments from members of the town council?
Just maybe, but to go back to your point, I think it's gotta be very well documented. It's an informal thing. If somebody says something, it's merely an opinion. It's not any official action or whatever.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We will go ahead and proceed and I will talk with Mr. Bennett. He may go ahead and start fleshing this out. All right. Schedule a budget work session.
Yes, we need to do this again. Can we still consume my notes? They also need.
You know, for this, you could do, the governor's emergency, declaration of emergency is still in effect and circumstances present an in-person meeting.
Is it still in effect by law, you know? Did it expire in February?
When I looked it up last week, it seemed like, the way I read it, it was extended indefinitely. There was no ending.
All right. I'd like to schedule it for Saturday, September 20th. September, sorry. September, right, I knew it. March 20th. If we could do same 10:00 AM. And the goal here would really be to knock it out to the point where we can take it to the April town council meeting. Everybody look at it, make any additional comments at that time. And then we schedule a public hearing for the meeting.
Sounds good.
Anybody have a problem with March 20th? Give me a model travel mode of a board.
Mr. Bennett, do we need to take any action on that?
Yes, you have to call a work session.
Call a work session? Do we have a roll call vote to a motion? So you were making a motion again?
I made a motion that we have a work session on the budget for Saturday, March 20th at 10:00 AM by Zoom.
Second?
Awesome.
All right, so we will have a virtual meeting. Roll, any discussion? Any questions? Roll call vote to approve or not approve, Gene?
Yes.
Joe? Yes?
Yes.
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 All right. We will continue this meeting to the March 20th virtual meeting at 10:00 AM. In order to have a work session for the budget. All right, thank you. Approve a public hearing for the FEMA flood plan ordinance. Mr. Bennett, do you want to lead us to blind through this?
Well, it's very simple. Mr. Bennett, if I may add, this was sent to me by a representative of FEMA. They said this is the model ordinance which you have to adopt. And I said, well, what happens if we don't adopt it?
Mr. Bennett, every word that you say is golden. Can you turn your microphone around so that we can hear you?
I'm sorry. FEMA representatives sent me the model ordinance which has been distributed and said that this has to be adopted in this form. There's no negotiation about this point, that point, whatever. Perhaps add to it, but you can't subtract anything from it. And so, of course, I asked the question, well, we don't have any land in the floodplain anymore under the new hat. So what happens if we do nothing? Well, she read off about 10 different things, consequences that have to affect people's financing and on and on and on and on. So after hearing all that, I think it would be in town's best interest to adopt this ordinance even though we don't have any land in the floodplain.
All right, so we need to approve a public hearing which would occur at the April meeting?
Yeah, a public hearing, yes.
A public hearing. So we have, I will make a motion that we hold a public hearing for the ordinance regarding the FEMA floodplain, floodplan, sorry. Again, to be held at the April meeting. Do I have a second to that motion?
That's second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call vote, Gene?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so Barbara, you will put that on the agenda for the. Thank you. And water and sewer rate review.
Thank you. This is, who calls the elephant in the room? This has not been looked at or talked for the last five years. We were going to talk about it in depth last year and do an increase in the water and sewer. And the pandemic arrived and we decided it was not only not appropriate, but it's not fair to anybody to have to go into looking at anything like that. Things are now at a point where we seriously have to look at doing the rate increases. I've been working closely with Joe, who is our number frontier coordinator. The best way to dis- or I am. He's just been incredible in the analytics and everything that we've come up with. And also, I've been working with Brad on the challenges and what we have to look at in the future for the water and sewer systems. So I'd like to turn it over first to Joe for some comments. And then we'll pull over to Brad.
Well, very unfortunately, we are running a $60,000 to $80,000 structural deficit in the town. We've hopefully been able to cover that over the years due to various windfalls, et cetera. But we're in a position, thanks certainly to this past year and the loss of revenue, where we're in very tough shape as far as the reserve fund we have. Brad will get into some very large capital bills that are coming due along the water and sewer plan. So what we are likely to propose is a 25% rate increase in two steps, a 12.5% increase in June and a 12.5% increase in September, halfway through fiscal year. For those who pay the minimum each month, that would be a $15.87 increase in their water and sewer bill combined. And we're about to potentially, you know, the lower end of that deficit, somewhere around $50,000 to $60,000. So it doesn't quite complete the picture, but we can go here and see how it goes. Certainly, we in the long run have the ability to dial it back as we reduce our balance sheet. We're still carrying considerable debt in the creation of the two systems.
Especially the sewer alone now. They were planned enough to let us skip paying last year's May and June, May and November.
Rather, the better term is defer.
Defer. Which each of those payments was $88,000. So what they did was they took that combination of $176,000 and added it to the balance of the payments that we have to make. So starting in May, our payments will be $99,000 twice a year.
And then the three additional bonds and.
Right, for the Y. We have three separate bonds for the water system. Thanks.
From a maintenance standpoint, that's kind of what I focus on. Let Joe and Kier worry about that. You know, it's one of those scenarios of pitting up and later. We have not done a good job of taking care of our infrastructure. We've tried to postpone things. We've said, oh, we'll get to it next year or whatever. On the water side, the system is working. We do have old pipes that are always a concern. Fortunately, the weather's been good. We're not like the folks in Texas who are not used to freezing and have pipes that are rupturing and things like that. So we're pretty in shape. But the biggest expense right now as we look at the water system are the meters. We have a lot of old meters. We have meters that are difficult, that are almost impossible to read. So we're not necessarily getting accurate numbers. So the bills aren't necessarily gonna be where they should be. So we're working with County Water to try and figure out, can the meters we have be repaired in some way? The meter portion, the extra reading portion replaced or repaired? If not, you know, what meter we need to go in with that, you know, will last? These things usually last quite a long time, but here again, we have a very old system. It's been in place for many, many years. And so we're seeing some problems with it. So that's the part of the distribution side. The pump house, it's in pretty good shape. The tanks, we haven't checked them about a year ago because of the rust spots on them. You're always concerned about the integrity of the shell. That's, that's pretty good, but they should be seen and last and repainted. At one time, I was told, and again, this is sort of hearsay, when it was said, hey, they need to be repainted. Someone went to the color lab and bought some house paint. And that's not what you paint that type of equipment with. You need heavy industrial epoxy. And as a result, we've got a lot of rusting on these tanks. And again, their age, the fittings are old. County Water is, I commend them because they keep the system running. And when they have to do something, they're very ginger with what they do and when they put a wrench to anything because fittings are old and they're rusted. And if we break a fitting, we lose our whole frequency system until that fitting can be replaced. So on the water side, again, you know, we have some repairs. We need some upgrades. There are some larger scale things which I won't get into. The DEQ has indicated that we should have another well should our primary well run dry or become less than adequate. That's gonna require some engineering to find the location, do some test work. And then all that ultimately gets submitted back to the state. And then if our well did go dry or something, we could then shift over. There's a lot of planning that has to go into all of that. So that's water. The wastewater, in and of itself, it works well. We produce very, very high quality FMD. DEQ was always impressed by our numbers. We've never had a violation. Let me check that. We've never had a violation as a result of our routine operations. We have had a couple of incidents where something went offline. We did release material. We notified the state and did some quick testing. And they said, okay, everything's fine. So we didn't incur penalties and fines or anything else that could have happened. So ESS does an excellent job of taking care of that. The force main system, which is, consists of the grinder pots and individual residences and businesses through to the lines that are buried under the street. Those lines are all intact. They're fine. You haven't had any problems with them. We do have issues with the grinder pots themselves. The pump inside the grinder pot, which is a unique type of pump. It's not just a water pump or a big sludge pump. It actually grinds material out in order so that it can flow through the pipes. Those pumps were designed by a company that held patents on them. And so you could only replace or repair those pumps. That patent has expired, I recently learned. And a couple of companies have jumped in with alternative pumps. And we are trying to get a price on those, thinking that they're gonna be lower. So if we have to replace the pump, it's gonna save us some money. And one of our thoughts is to replace the pump that is currently behind the, the pack of, the pack of it's being built so that we have one of these new pumps in place that we can see how it operates and see how it performs. For the balance of the system, what we're doing is identifying those systems that are not connected as a freight gap. So there are numbered residents that have subject systems that are functional. My house is one. So by ordinance, we did not have to connect to the sewer system. But there's a grinder pump in that pot that's just sitting there. So what we're gonna do, we think there's possibly six. We're gonna have ESS pull those pumps out and look at and inspect them so they can be our spares. And this way, again, we can stretch out our repair dollars so that we're not having to spend a lot of money. Because again, these, these ones that are in there, there's only one place we can take them to get them repaired and they know it. And not that they're gouging us, but it's just the nature of the situation. But if we could go to this alternative, then each time we have to send one out, we say, well, jeez, this one's gotta get repaired. You can weigh that against the cost of a new pump, an alternative pump. And there again, save some money potentially. And we're putting a new one in which has a longer life than a repairable. So it's this constant balancing of maintaining the things. So that's the portion of the sewer system in terms of distribution. The treatment plant itself, I've spoken on this several times. And it's probably not a surprise to anybody that I'm always disappointed with the design of that plant. I think the town got taken for a ride on the road because there's a lot of things there that aren't designed for our particular town. We have plenty of capacity and all, but the problem is there's certain components that were just put in. And if other components had been used or slightly different design, we wouldn't have the operating cost we get right now. We run an average of $2,400 a month in electricity to run that plant. That's a lot of money because a lot of the motors, they go on and they're on full blast when they aren't at full load. So one of the things I've been doing, a gentleman in California that I'm working with, and we're looking at the possibility of putting in, it's called a VFD, variable frequency drive. And what that does is it controls the motor according to the load of the load. If the load is light, the motor runs at very low power consumption. If the load gets heavy, then it goes to full. He believes that on some of our motors, we can save as much as thirty, maybe forty percent of our energy costs. And the, and the equipment to put in to do that, we could possibly repay it in six to eight months. So I'd be a little more conservative on those, but he's done tens of thousands of pumps and motors and things. So he feels pretty comfortable, but he needs some more information from me. So, you know, we're looking at some of these things and we control our costs in this way. We're looking at some other things in terms of the actual operation of the plant so that it's easier to maintain. We have things that are going out, sensors that recently a sensor went out. And when ESS talked to manufacturers and went back, they said, why was this one put in? This one really isn't appropriate for this application. We have a different sensor, slightly more expensive, but it would have lasted longer. And so here again, there's all these little things that have come up over the, over the years, and the plant is getting older, so we are running into these things. And we're trying where we can to balance this back and forth. You know, every time something comes up, I get an email or I get a phone call or the environment or the ESS, or whoever, we say, well, can we do this, can we do that? How can we, you know, try and save some money? You know, for example, we pay to have the sludge ball away. And that can run about nine hundred dollars every time they come in and pump out sludge. So there's an additive that we will use in the warmer months that helps to reduce that sludge balling. So it's not very expensive, some, it's just a couple of dollars a day for the additive. But we'll start adding that and hopefully we can, you know, stretch our sludge ball back. Again, save some money. So we, we have a lot to do. And unfortunately, we're a small community with a small base that supports that system. But I think there's some, some various ways that, you know, we can optimize it. One of the things I would like to do, and I've mentioned to Gail and to Joe and to Fred, once we get through this budgeting session, we're kind of ready to move forward, I'd like to put together a group of several people in the town or even in the county. Because in our county, we're very, we have people, tremendous resource and knowledge. And so I'd like to do is try and get smaller people that we can look at our different systems. You know, look at our water system, look at our sewage system, look at the town in general and say, what are all the things that we need to do, all the fixes, all the repairs, all the upgrade, everything else? I am one of these, and ESS is going to help us to say, these are the things that we see and we know we need to work with. Already they've complimented me and said, wow, this is really great, you think out a lot. But look at all these different things and then try to put a number on them, a financial number, and then so, then start seeing if there's some brand money out there. With the new administration, I believe there's going to be a lot of money for energy savings and things like that. And being a small town, you know, we can go to someone like the EPA and say, look, we're just a poor old church mice. We need some money for our treatment plant. And, you know, we may get it because they, they see, hey, there's a lot of old treatment plants like yours. We can do this here, what's this going to do for other plants across the country? So I think that's one of our approaches. One of the things that I wanted to do, and I think has merit, once we do some of these other energy improvements of the plans, I'd like to see what we couldn't get solar put in place for the treatment plant and for the, uh, the pump heads. I'm sure that without very much effort, our water system could be running completely on solar energy. So, so that's kind of where we're at, and it's kind of why we have to, you know, have these situations where we're going to have to move some, some money around. The rates aren't, we've got to recover. Because again, we, we haven't documented the proper maintenance things that should be done on a regular basis. And like I say, fortunately for us, Country Water and ESS have been really great to us. Don Harrell, who was with ESS since its inception, I believe, he was like employee number two. He really liked the town, and so he made a lot of effort and gave us a lot of advice on things that needed to be done. Done, retired, he still is available. So, you know, that's kind of where we're at right now. And I'm thinking that, you know, we've got the right attitude to try and make some of these corrections in regard to our systems.
So essentially, these are things that should have been done along the way or should have been done initially. And we're at a point where we're trying to have one of the best systems that we can. And we have a lot of fixes, the things that weren't fixed before that we need to.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of these capital costs are really coming there.
Right, it's unfortunate. The water tower, we haven't mentioned that. That is in good shape. We don't have any issues with that there other than we need to have a better system of monitoring the level of water in the tower. And that's a, there's a funnel line that's up there, but it always goes out and it's an issue. And I've got an idea where we can avoid that and do some of the things. So, yeah, as you say, it's, you know, we've come to all of those things and, yeah, now we've got a.
Now it's done.
That was good.
Not straight.
Right. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and again, I want to be, we, we are doing an excellent job of protecting the environment by having a treatment plant that releases water that is of very, very high quality. So to the Commonwealth, we are doing and being very responsible.
Thanks, Brad. What I'd like to recommend for the next step, must Joe, you thought anything more?
I'm going to, I'm sorry, I wait till we get to the public forum.
Yeah. I have some more numbers. I think we might have that. What I thought the next good step would be, if Joe and Barbara and I get together, we just tighten up what the increase should be, get it down as low as it possibly can, like Joe's mentioned, July one and January one, break it up. And then on, I guess we'll still have to do a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing on the water and sewer rate increases at the April meeting.
All right. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes, Joe, I was wondering, maybe for the next meeting, if you don't have it now, but could you give us a breakdown of how to override at the twenty-five percent increase? And that's my first question. The second question is, you were saying that twelve point five percent in June and then twelve point five percent in September?
I meant to say June. I meant to say January.
January.
Yeah, the next.
Is that just a mandate? Are, are consumers, residents going to be hit with, you know, more of an increase after that?
This will get us pretty close, and I'd like to, you know, let that go for a year and see how we go.
Okay, so by, by the next meeting, could we have some of a breakdown so that residents come to the meeting?
Yeah, I did a three-year rolling average of what our expenses were over, over our income for the systems, and then came up with a rough number. This, a twenty-five percent increase gets us to the bottom end of that range. Presumably, hopefully next year, things will look a little better and we'll be able to close that gap a little better without having to do an additional increase. But you could see potentially to fully close the gap using these numbers, another twelve point five percent on top of that. So, which is a thirty-seven point five percent.
And do we have to do this now?
We have to do.
We're setting it on.
We have to do an increase.
We can't.
Wait another year.
Yeah, we can't wait.
We're, thanks to the, I mean, unless, barring any additional actions, we're, we're at the end of this year going to just about bankrupt our reserve fund thanks to the loss of revenue this year, which means there's no money left to fill the hole. We've been filling the hole out of our reserve funds. We have fifty thousand dollars at minimum in deferred maintenance on the water and sewer plant, and there's no revenue to support it.
And we have five to ten of the pumps per year that we've got to budget for replacement. We've got five to ten water meters.
Yeah, I was going to hit the additional, put a finer pump rad. There's a hundred and thirty-eight meters in town, I mean, twenty of which have been replaced over the last ten years. They usually have life span fifteen to twenty years, at least a hundred and eighteen meters, potentially to have to be replaced. Even if you only did that at ten meters a year, that's fifty thousand dollars a year in fees just for the meters. So, the unfortunate math is that we're going to go, we're going to be kind of solvent very, very barring an increase in revenue. And we only have two options for that. Unfortunately, unlike my friends in Washington, we can't front on it. All right, so we have a motion? But I, what my commitment is to come to a work session with some, work it out on paper and all this, to get that back. That had to come, so it was going to be the numbers and understand why we're in the situation we're in.
I have a question. The system was designed to accommodate how many meters? And I thought the plan was that each year, or two or three, it would accept more users. So that's the other alternative to solving this budget problem, is to put more people on the system.
Well, I think, are you talking about the water system or the sewer system?
Both.
Well, I think everybody that needed to be on the sewer system is connected.
Or that wanted to be is not connected.
If, if you want to be connected, I don't think the town would turn down any connection that wants to get.
That's fine, I agree with you.
Not much larger than that. But just for a good example, Brad said, you know, he's not hooked up to the sewer system. But Brad paid his tax fees and, and he's paid everything he pays his water and sewer every month, so. But John can jump in.
The operating fees that you're, even with the twenty-five percent increase won't begin to cover the past and future capital costs associated with the operation of the sewer system. So when you sell more, it's like you're digging for your hole for yourself.
Wasn't that always the plan?
Um, the plan was that there'd be this phase one of the sewer system and creation of the sewer service district to encourage infill development and the build out of the town core. And once that occurred and everyone realized that that would be a process that would take longer or longer, could see where everything is and how much the remaining capacity is, and then come up with a plan for phase two. The, the sixty thousand gallon capacity, Mill Hurd was working on the comp plan at the time all of this was coming along, and he did an analysis of positive build out of down under various scenarios. And sixty thousand gallon capacity was sought as, in, as a result of his analysis and the possibilities under various scenarios of buildup.
And where are we now?
About twenty-five, twenty-eight, twice the high one.
That's about right, really under fifty percent.
Basically, development of that, or additional flow would certainly offset that, the deficit, that capital reserve problem. So if we do see development of black capital will be tackled associated with it, certainly. It's offset the long-term capital issue. And in fact, that's frankly how the town's been given by it. So windfall has always come wrong just to the right place, whether it was the Salabia on Hall or other previous transactions. No one was compelled to plan. Or rather, there's increased, there's a set of changes in town, increase the tax base so we can cover the delta.
Just to go back to some history, this is actually the second sewer system. The town had taken an option on twenty-five acres, had gone through the design and a lot of the engineering and the permit, initial permitting process to, to build a mass drain field on the western side of town. And as the town was getting ready to do that after spending large sums while they were putting stuff, and to pull final permit to build it, the state water control board changed regulations and would not issue permits with the town. There's some speculation about what was behind that, but that's what happened. So there, that, the capital cost, the town designed and was ready to build one sewer system that never came to pass, but it's certainly part of the capital cost of solving the sewer problem for the town.
Do you have any? Not, not a message any of us relish delivering?
No.
And it's not because we're not squeezing other budget line items. There's a reason there hasn't been a lot of money put into decorating the town. We've relied on personal funds to do that over the last year because we essentially hold oil spending. It was more or less discretionary. There's still work to do, but it won't, you know, going online payments, you know, that's a few thousand dollars a year. Zeroing out decorating costs, that's about as much as a year, but we're talking about tens of thousands of dollars.
Right, I forgot to mention, thank you Barbara for all her work the last couple of years. So that we can now take online payments, you can pay your sewer water bill, your zoning, your permit fees, everything. Push that, push that button.
So what I'd like to do is we've got a motion, I'd like to get to the public forum so that people can have a chance. So the motion again is?
Motion is that I would like to have a public hearing on the water and sewer rate increases that Joe and I will tweak as tight as we can with Barbara over the next couple of weeks. Have that public hearing at the April meeting.
All right, and there was a second on that?
I seconded.
And Brad seconded. Any other discussion or questions to set up this meeting at the April? Roll call vote to Jean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, so it will be on the April agenda? All right. Uh, that is the end of the new business. I open up now for public forum. Caroline, you have your answer.
So just, just to end off that discussion, or to, to interject on that discussion, I think for your April meeting, it would be really helpful reiterating some of what Marianne said, to be really clear what the twenty-five percent is paying. I still wasn't clear if it was, if that was making up for your sixty-six thousand deficit.
It is. But I wasn't. I wasn't providing a first man.
I wasn't sure how it related to all prayers.
It's not doing anything about the.
So it's nothing about capital costs. You will get the question about how the capital costs, what kind of financing, that's not going to be covered by rate increases. So you're going to have to answer that. Secondly, I'm also confused about this question of capacity, John, that you mentioned. Because the, the town's comprehensive plan makes its whole argument for why, well, one of the arguments, for why we need to boost town population and capacity is that these systems are working under capacity. And this would also make financial sense. And, and it implies prohibit, you know, rate increases to, to cover a gap because we have insufficient capacity. So if the black kettle were to go ahead with seventeen or twelve houses, that's going to make a difference. So, but John, I thought what you just said is actually that's not going to make a difference.
It will make a difference.
It will make a difference.
Yes, if that comes into the sewer service district.
Okay, so I.
That'll use a good portion of, of the remain, of that, it'll use a significant portion of that.
And to be clear, if we have that sudden capital influx and we're able to reduce the balance sheet, there's no reason not to reverse those, those increases.
Exactly.
Till we get over retiring some of our debt, we've got to do something.
The other, the other thing that the council analyzed at the time, as soon as you expand sewer service district, cost of extending the lines and every capital costs associated with that in relation to the returns you get from operators, it would place the town in another deficit.
So, so that math needs to be worked out. Because if we're saying the answer is to expand the capacity. expand the capacity, but the capital costs are going to negate that advantage, I mean, you know, we need to think that through.
We have to think about what was in phase one. We had lines already laid, so if we look at infill properties, okay, there's not a great deal of expense, it's just tapping into the line. But if we start moving to phase two, then we incur some very stiff expenses that are going to be, I'm sure, much greater than what it costs us to put in the lines ten years ago.
Originally, yeah.
Right, so, you know, I would say where our best opportunity to be is what can be done within the boundaries of phase one, where there's infill or something else that would add to the system, because then you potentially, well, in order to have a sewer connection, more than likely you have a water connection, so, you know, that goes hand in hand. Operating costs of the plant will go up, and we use more power requirements, you have more chemicals, you know, all these kinds of things. Probably the operating contract for ESS would only go up a slight amount, maybe it means that there has to be a few more hours or someone, longer days, or something like that, but, you know, I agree with Patrick's original premise. We have capacity, and we can make use of it to generate more revenue, but it's understanding phase one for the sewer district and phase two, and like John said, if we go outside that, we're going to incur some bigger costs, then we may never ever recoup, we may just be chasing ourselves forever. So, the phase one, you know, maximizing what is available within phase one is probably our best plan.
So, I would just to explain that at this meeting, but I think that's a lot of confusion about.
I think the thing about operating the sewer system is density is the friend of economical operation of the sewer system. And vision was that maximize density in the town core, and then sort of have it grow Parcels touching that.
Right, so you're making small additions, right?
Where there was denser, that would pay for it. Didn't let sprawl.
I'm sorry. Can you, I'm sorry, what you should do is you should state your name and where you're resident.
Me? Jean Colkin, and I live here in town, in Washington, sorry. And just, I wanted to just follow up with what Caroline and John were just discussing, and now that Joe needs something else to do. But, and maybe it's too much, right, but somehow, if there can be some sort of, sort of projection, you know, like, so phase one, if we do the infill, you know, we're going to make this range, right, or this kind of an income versus this cost. Versus phase two, if, as Brad points out, you have to extend infrastructure beyond the town, wherever it is, right? You're going to need, in order to get that back or come out hopefully on the positive side, X amount of usage. Instead of just saying, "Well, phase two is not going to work," or "Phase one might work," you know, to me, that's where we've been, I gather, all these days.
Yeah, as well, we can speculate, and like anything, there's so many options. An infill could be, it might be a residence.
Right.
But maybe it's a little, not a little business, you know, a restaurant or something like that, so the usage is very...
I understand that, but how many, I mean, how many options do you have, right? It's commercial or it's residential, sort of, and it's multi, you know, it's the inn or the B and B, and they have, I mean, to me, there ought to be somehow categorized that in a broad sense, not to...
Yeah, I mean, it absolutely generally for residence, and for the infill ones, of course, the, Brad, I would refer you, but I mean, the capital costs are very, almost negligible, right, to the tax fees and other things, because that sort of all comes out in the wash, really. Actually, we make some money off of that, my best estimation. It really comes to going to phase two and how far you have to go before you're getting whoever's building. Whether that's extending the black kettle, which may not be a very hard leap on the current building plan, and they work out, or going further afield, that's when it starts to get more pipe and traction, sort of.
It just seems to me that more information would be a really helpful thing for everybody.
Yeah, there was another factor at play, back when all this got started, was that there were a whole bunch of half-acre lots that you couldn't get a drain field on, so nobody had ever built on. But if sewer system didn't have the sewer service district, then, you know, we had people here with large checks saying they wanted fifteen taps to put in a subdivision, which I don't think everybody wants to pursue, though, but...
Plus, we have to increase the sewer plant.
Nancy Bunn.
In Black Hill, extend your phase one, or is that in phase two?
Phase one.
Okay.
I'm heading to sewer service district.
All right. We've been talking about infill in phase one for a long time, and no one has a plan for such, I think, I don't hear. This one is finally coming up, I'm very hopeful for, but I don't see it happening elsewhere in the town, and we just keep talking, talking, talking. How can we promote that? I mean...
I think if I may, as I remember, the time it was adopted, I think everyone realized it's a, it could be a long process before, you know, really didn't know how long it could be, we depend on a lot of different economic conditions and everything, but the last thing council wondered at the time was just to extend sewer lines and start building houses, you know, start, you know, subdivisions.
And I don't know who owns all these various parcels that could be infill, but it's sort of up to them, you know, do they want to build on it, do they want to sell, do they have someone else build on it? You know, there's a lot of question. As you say, promoting it, not necessarily bad thing, you probably need someone who has expertise in sort of branding the town that could help us to say, "Hey, here's some opportunity, you know, would you like to come to our town?" So, you know, and obviously, if someone says, "Hey, I want to do something," as we all know, there'll be lots and lots and lots and lots more discussion about, you know, whatever that property is going to become, so...
I had, my name, saw my name on the post office flyer, called me to object to the black kettle development, just, why me? No, no, his, my name was the only one he knew from, he went on and on and on about it, so I imagined that there are others, and yet, this is very beneficial to us, I...
Yeah, I agree with you, but I think, just coming along there.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Thank you all for these, for your feedback. If not, I will close the public forum. Instead of a German, I would like to have a motion to continue this meeting to the March twenty budget work session.
I salute.
Thank you, Gail. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions or comments or discussion? Do not roll call vote, can you?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We are continuing.